To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Baraco.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Gordioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
Lisa Catania.
Yeah.
And George Deos.
Prior to the board commissioner meeting tonight, we have a public hearing that is starting now at seven o'clock to solicit public comments on the township application to Delaware County for the 2022 community developed block grant funding. With that said, I'm going to turn over the meeting to our township engineer, Lisa Catania, to provide us with an overview of what this entails.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy, I believe, of a memorandum that I did for potential projects. This is the community development block grant for 2022. This is a HUD program that is administered by the county of Delaware through the Office of Housing and Community Development. We have been advised that there is about $3 million that is expected to come from HUD to the county that will be utilized under this program. Obviously, the county has other programs that that money is used for, so we're not expecting that the total $3 million will be used for specific projects that the community would entertain or they would entertain for communities. The township is eligible for to submit two projects. The first would be a priority project, and the second project would be your alternate. There is a resolution that will need to be completed. I believe that will happen at the January meeting. And we need to have the information as far as the two projects earlier than that because we are required to have these submitted by the seventh of January. It's just after your meeting that we would have to submit, your January meeting, we would have to submit. Some of the projects, and I'm going to list some of these projects, however, they're in no order. So it's merely a cross-section of the types of projects and some specifics that we know here in the township that we would like to see completed at some point in time. As you are aware, we've been we've been involved with the Lynwood Heights project or excuse me, study. We are looking at possibly a Johnson Avenue rehabilitation. I'm calling it phase three because we have done the Trichester Avenue Streetscape, which was part of that Lynwood revitalization plan. Johnson Avenue also had a community development block grant completed about five years ago. This would be a continuation of that program and would be considered for curb, sidewalk, driveway, aprons, park amenities, possibly even including work at the Johnson Avenue Park. The other would be Excelsior Playground improvements. Bergdahl Avenue, Phase Two Park Construction. As you are aware, we completed the Stormwater Basin conversion at Bergdahl Park. We did have some trail work and some stream bank work that we wanted to do as part of that project that would be considered a phase two. Those stream bank improvements would also be considered as part of your MS4 program. We would, however, have to do both sides of the creek to get credit for the total suspended solid reduction we would have from that stream bank reduction. The signage upgrades, we've done Twin Oaks and Excelsior. Actually, we're waiting for the signs. They've been purchased. We're waiting for the signs to be installed. We're looking at possibly doing other areas with wayfaring signs, street name signs, and neighborhood signs. One that probably is on our radar, but we're not ready for this at this point, would be the Market Street Streetscape, and that would be Phase One of the Streetscape project, similar to that like we did on Trichester Avenue. The feasibility study, quite a while ago, Commissioner Neary had talked about Peach Street Bridge, and this would be a pedestrian bridge replacement, emergency access bridge study. The sidewalk and curb upgrades in various areas, Greenwood Avenue, Mill Road area, again, something that was discussed quite a while ago. Stormwater improvements on McKay Avenue, Fifth Avenue, and Greenwood Avenue. These projects would require additional funding more than, as they are, more than a community development block grant award, which is typically about $100,000. Also talked about doing some alley resurfacing. There's various alleys within the eligible area that we would be able to mill and repair. However, we do need to get easements from the various property owners for some of those alleys. I also provided, and I'm assuming that you have this as well, potential projects that we put together for the Lynwood Heights area. This was provided maybe two, three months ago after we had, Brian Seidel and I had done the study action items. Infrastructure improvements, curb, sidewalk, landscaping, stormwater upgrades, and road resurfacing on Taylor Avenue, Johnson Avenue, Lawhead Avenue, Locust Street, Pleasantview Avenue, Wharton, Huddle Avenue, Columbia, Market Street, Hughes Avenue. Street name signs, as we discussed, pedestrian lighting on Market Street and Johnson Avenue Park. Alley revitalization, as we talked about, land acquisition. There is a current study that's being done with, in association with Lower Trichester Township that discusses some land acquisition that also would be eligible. Open space, and as we talked about, upgrading the Johnson Avenue Park. I'll answer any questions that you have, and we do have to open it up to the public if anyone in the public is interested.
Just that I think that, and again, it's totally up to the board, but I do think concentrating our efforts in that Lynwood Heights neighborhood, since we've already had some traction with the Trichester Avenue Streetscape project, we are working on that design of Wallhead Avenue, and we were previously given the grant for that redevelopment plan for Lynwood Heights. We have some traction going on improving that neighborhood. So if we can continue to allocate some funding to that neighborhood, I think it would be best bang for our buck.
I will tell you that in discussions with the county, county council seems to feel that if you started a project and you're looking at a second phase or a third phase of the project, council is more apt to look at that as a positive. So it may be behooves, as manager said, to continue with the projects that we've already taken.
Mr. Pierce, any legal aspects?
Only the only legal aspect at this time, Mr. President, would be that I would suggest that we leave the public comment period open until Tuesday, which I believe is the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth of December to comply with all the public notice requirements. There was a notice that was published in the newspaper. It was probably not early enough for tonight's hearing. So my suggestion is, and we discussed it with Mr. Needles, that we post that on our website, that if there are any additional comments that should be done, that we should leave that open until the fourteenth.
The board would have to meet again over it?
No.
Mike, we posted on the website to keep it open until the twentieth.
The twenty, either one.
Just to give the people a little extra time.
As long as it's further along than the fourteenth, that would be safe. So the twentieth is fine.
Are there any citizens' comments at this point in time? Record showed there are no citizens' comments. Any comments from Pierce?
I have a few, but I was, Lisa, you did answer one of the questions that I was going to ask was, is there any project on here? And you're correct about the council being favorable on continuing our projects. And that's one of my, I mean, I would love to jump over to my ward tomorrow, but if we have a project that we could finally put to bed and rest and move forward with the CDVG money, I'm good with that. The question I had besides that, I mean, is there anything on here besides, is it the Lynwood Heights or the Market Street that we will be continuing? Or less than Lynwood Heights project that we started?
It would be Lynwood Heights, yeah. I'm sorry.
Right, no, 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 he was talking to you.
No, either way, I was looking at Berkeley at this time.
We had applied, in previous years, we had applied to continue like Johnson Avenue rehabilitation. Right, we were, I think, declined or twice, right? So then we have the Trichester Avenue upgrades, so that, and then we've had the Lynwood Heights project, the study done. So it would probably be the best option to have that project be the priority project in hopes of, hey, this is a part of this big thing that we're doing down here. Can we get some, you know, get some additional support to finish that phase, phase of the project? What I was going to add is have Item One, Johnson Avenue Rehabilitation, as a priority project for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant.
Now, the other question was Market Street. Do we have a plan yet, or have we sat down for that Streetscape? Or are we copying Guy, or are we going to be different than Market Street? I mean, have the residents, we really haven't gotten that far to have something.
We haven't gotten that far. As a matter of fact, today, George and I had a conversation. I received some feedback for the scooping form that we're doing for the Greenlight Go for 452 Chestnut and I-95 area, only to find that PennDOT is doing a study for safety improvements on 452 that we weren't aware of. So Al Federico, myself, and the consultant for PennDOT were trying to get some kind of a conference call together. So at least we have some idea of what's going on. It's a result when I met with, and it's a long, it's a probably drawn-out story you don't need to hear, but when we were doing the AutoZone final inspection for the signal, Paul Lutz from PennDOT was at the meeting, and he said he had advised me that he was going to take the scoping form and send it to the study group, the safety group. So they did that, and he came with comments this morning. I think we're premature in doing anything on the Streetscape till we know what it is they're planning, number one. And then from another standpoint, that area is more of a commercial area. So we've got to take a look at it differently than we would that we did when we did the first phase of Trichester Avenue.
Yeah, I was just thinking that because it's up to the I-95 to Lawhead. From I-95 to Lawhead is where you're residential. Everything else becomes commercial. Till you hit 322, then you're back to residential. It doesn't hurt to dress up the area from Lawhead to I-95 because it is residential. And the last question was, I was reading about the alley resurfacing. I know they're ours, but what easements will we need? If we already own the alleys, what easement will we need to have that redone?
Typically, well, we could go in and we could try to just mill the fifteen foot. However, because of the proximity of the garages and a lot of the stone areas, we'll end up having a construction easement necessary so that we can tie everything in properly.
I'm good.
Yes, go ahead.
Mind if I make one more comment? Sorry. So going back through the list and thinking about the Lynwood Heights neighborhood. So Johnson Avenue, that obviously makes sense because it's a continuation of three separate projects. The other is that we've already done some work with signage down there. So continuing our signage program with the branded street signs and the poles and everything, that would make sense as a continuation of work already done there. And then the other thing is if the alleyways, if the alleyways are to be considered, I think we should also look at the potential for traffic calming on those alleyways included, as well as the ADA ramps at each of the side streets. And to take it a step further, if you're not considering the alleyways, but you are interested, there is a possibility that this money could be used to do all new ADA ramps and crosswalks at each of the crosswalks throughout the community there. I think there's a lot of really good options because we've got a lot of stuff we can do down there.
Are you saying that we could do the alley resurfacing in addition to, or make it one project to do the resurfacing and the ADA upgrades?
I think if you do the alleyway, you would just do the crosswalks and the ADA where the alleyways cross the streets, like come into like Huddle and the other streets. But I think you could also look at as a project of saying it's an ADA and crosswalk improvement project where you're going to each of the intersections down there and doing the crosswalks, the ornamental crosswalks with the ADA improvements at each of the intersections.
Can't we use liquid fuels for the ADA?
Yes, that could also be a project that we do with fuels funds.
Okay.
The alleyways, well, we know we can't do the alleyways with the, with liquid fuels, but we could do the ADA crosswalks if we.
George, you actually, if you own the alley, then you can utilize, you have to own and maintain an alley in order to utilize the liquid fuels money.
We have, we just don't maintain.
Yeah, you do.
That was my next question. Who owns the alleys? Do we?
It varies. Different places, it varies. And what we typically have to do is research the deeds through that area to determine who owns them because they're not on any liquid fuels list. We have a listing that PennDOT provides, and we update as we get new dedicated streets, but the alleys are not on them. So we have to provide that information to Marjorie Paris, the municipal services person, when we do alleys as part of liquid fuels.
Was there ever any passport commissioners in years ago to turn them back to the residents in the area for these alleys? I mean, was that ever looked at about? Is it too complicated?
If they're named or they aren't?
No.
Usually if they have a street name or whatever.
No.
It doesn't count.
So that's why we typically will pull deeds along that stretch on both sides of, you know, because typically you have the backs of the houses that are one alley. So we'll take those deeds and verify that, yes, it is either owned by the property owner or it could very well be owned by no one. And we've had cases like that, not necessarily in upper Trichester, where the developers made these alleys and then nothing, they weren't dedicated to anyone. So the deed stops on one side of it.
Trust me, I know that would be one heck of a project to even think about considering. I didn't know if any other board in the past history ever thought about it to say, hey, just keep it back, but it's too complicated.
I'm not aware that, I mean, in the long period that I've been around, different periods of time, I don't recall that anyone's ever suggested that.
George has one more thing to say.
I do think there would be a decent amount of administrative cost for anything we do with the alleyways because of the potential for easements and things like that, so that may be a deterrent. On the flip side, we did speak to this in that Lynwood Heights revitalization plan, that somehow we'd need to figure out what the penalty for is with the alleyways so that everything is clear, concise, everybody knows whose they are, whose responsibility they are.
Even though we're going to keep public comment open to the summer twentieth, but ask for a motion to, for the community development block grant.
I'll let you have something.
I was going to ask, are we going to, are we doing a resolution tonight or no? We would just wait till, so what's going to happen then?
Well, as I said, your next meeting is January the third. The grant applications are due on the seventh. So I would need to know what those projects are, even though you aren't taking action on them. I don't know whether you want to wait till the twentieth.
Yeah, Lisa, so what I'd like to do is for us to prepare the general sections of the grant that aren't going to be directly related to the project between now and the twentieth. I'll pull the board on the twentieth, and we can ratify that vote.
And I'm on vacation from Christmas Eve till after New Year's. Great, thank you. That's on tape.
All right, second, second emotion.
There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll start our seven thirty, we'll start our commissioner's meeting at seven.
All there two days ago. Did you see names? My brother Chris told me that too fast.
Oh, so she must have passed then, maybe.
I think she said, he wasn't sure.
Oh, my God. Yeah, Ed, Nuntio's mom. Oh. Yeah, no, I didn't know.
I knew she had a heart attack a couple of days ago.
Yeah, oh, man. I know that joke. He really messed up now. I'm telling you, he is.
He's going to lose his mom.
He going, right, he is. Right.
He'll put him over the edge. He's already.
He already, he's almost there. He already, he's almost there.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Neils, can you take the roll call for the record, please?
Sure, Commissioner Baako.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Gaudioso.
Here.
Commissioner Radkowski.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
Lisa Cantina.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. Before we move on to citizens comments, we have a small presentation tonight for Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania First Class Township Commissioners Association of Ward presentation to Commissioner Joseph Baako and Commissioner Nicole Whitaker. The presenter tonight is Dennis Arthur. He's a commissioner in Tinnigan, and he's also a member of our First Class Township Commissioners Society. So with that said, should you come up and present, please?
Thank you. I just wanted, on behalf of the Commissioners Association. I just want to clarify saying, I'm here on behalf of the Pennsylvania Association of Township Commissioners. We have a presentation here for Joseph Baako. Close? Close enough. In recognition of your 12 years of service to Upper Chi Chester Township, we present you with a small token of our appreciation. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And also, on that note, we would like to thank Nicole Whitaker for your 12 years of excellent service to the Upper Chi Chester Township. Thank you very much.
You too, Dennis. I said, you too, Dennis. Geez, and I remember when.
You're welcome. Thank you. We thank you. Thanks, Charlie.
Right. Nobody ever wants to stay.
I'm happy to leave, Charlie.
Congratulations again to Commissioner Baako, Commissioner Whitaker. Save it for your board.
Thank you. No, thank you. These are for all the late nights, that's why I wanted them to stay, but all the late nights that I missed, you know, working and being here and, you know, for my family. So I thank them for coming out and, um, yeah. I can't believe it's been 12 years and now we have, start four more in January. So thank you to the, um, to the, to the constituents in the second ward for their continued support. Thank you.
Like Nicole said, I can't believe 12 years went by already. I've enjoyed most of it. And there's a couple, there's a couple times it wears you, but most, it's mostly good years and this board's pretty much been together for 10 out of 12, I think. I think we've made some decent strides and made some good improvements to the township.
Thank you. Thank you. With that said, Bill.
I told him 12 more years, he's going, he wouldn't answer. No, I'm good. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
All right, this time we move on to citizens, citizens comments. Anybody willing to come up and speak? Pastor Winters, just for the record, can you just state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Pastor Winters, Chi Chester Baptist Church, over on Cherry Tree Road. I know I'm limited to two minutes, but since there's nobody else to comment tonight, if I go over two minutes, don't pull the trap door. Um, I wanted to thank you for several different things. First of all, whoever worked on the, the amplifying system, just tonight, listening to the first part of your meeting, I could hear much better. It it's very helpful when we can hear what's going on. I know you can hear yourselves up there, but not always back here can we hear all the details. But it was very audible and very hearable tonight. I appreciate that. Secondly, I want to thank you for all of your dedication, dedication and your work throughout this year and 12 years for some of you. I appreciate you very much and I'm proud of this township, the commissioners, as I'm able to make the meetings, just looking at your diligence, your sincerity, your honesty. And I believe you have this community at heart. If you didn't, you wouldn't be in here for 12 years. But at any rate, I want to thank you for your dedicated service. You've made a good community for us to live in and it's deeply appreciated, as well as our police departments. I think they're some of the best, uh, public advocates for Upper Chi Chester is their, their patrolling and their, their dedication and their politeness, as well as their respectability and respectfulness when they deal with people. Our, the township, the sanitation department, another good asset in the community. When they come by to pick up our trash, always willing to help any way they possibly can, answer any questions, what goes in, what, whatnot. So I just want to give those words of appreciation to all of you here tonight. Another observation, and that is that at least two people in our community were naturalized yesterday at a ceremony in, in media. I read a report, um, just today, ages 19 to 29, that age bracket, only 31% of them appreciate the United States. They don't look at, they, they look at the United States as a special nation. That means 60, 69% do not see the, the privileges we have here in the United States. But I say that to say this, that the two individuals that I know of, one is a member of our church, was naturalized as a citizen yesterday, as well as the other ones that were naturalized that I met at the ceremony, they were so thankful to be, become citizens of the United States and in their packet was proud to be an American. And they took that out and they were so proud of that and the American flag pin that they were given. And I'm thinking, we really, as a nation, sometimes don't appreciate what we have. And this new regeneration is being taught, and I know this for a fact, taught that this is not such a great nation, there are many other great nations. There may be other great nations, but I still think this is the greatest one on earth. And I think that the fact that we have people who are committed to this nation helped to make it great, but even greater than that is our faith, faith in God. One from a communist country visited 30, maybe 50 years ago, came to find out what made America great. And as he traveled through and saw businesses and buildings and so forth, he came to the final conclusion after his stay here in the United States, that what has made America great and greater than any other nation is their churches and the preaching of their faith in God. And that faith in God, a fear of God and a reverence for God, for God's word, has made this country great. As a pastor, I, I, I want to make sure that the word of God is something that is preached and proclaimed as much as I possibly can, because I believe that's where our, our strength is going to come from, our, a solid foundation is going to be built, is our faith in God. We've come through a rough year, there've been a lot of fears from the, the virus, fears from inflation, fears from job situations, fears from the enemy, and just so much turmoil and uncertainty, maybe that's the word I want to use. But I'd like to leave you with a message from, from the word of God at this Christmas season, a message that came from heaven to earth, a message from the angels to the shepherds, fear not. Fear not. Behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. That's us today. For unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior which is Christ the Lord. I think that's the foundation of our country, it's needs to be, it's the foundation of our faith as believers in Jesus Christ, and it's the foundation upon which this country was built. And I believe it's the foundation that'll give us confidence and, and hope for the future. And so at this Christmas time, fear not. Lord has sent us good tidings of great joy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that said, Bill.
I told him 12 more years, he's going, he wouldn't answer. No, I'm good. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. All right, this time we move on to citizens, citizens comments. Anybody willing to come up and speak? Pastor Winters, just for the record, can you just state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Pastor Winters, Chi Chester Baptist Church, over on Cherry Tree Road. I know I'm limited to two minutes, but since there's nobody else to comment tonight, if I go over two minutes, don't pull the trap door. I wanted to thank you for several different things. First of all, whoever worked on the, the amplifying system, just tonight, listening to the first part of your meeting, I could hear much better. It, it's very helpful when we can hear what's going on. I know you can hear yourselves up there, but not always back here can we hear all the details. But it was very audible and very hearable tonight. I appreciate that. Secondly, I want to thank you for all of your dedication, dedication and your work throughout this year and 12 years for some of you. I appreciate you very much and I'm proud of this township, the commissioners, as I'm able to make the meetings, just looking at your diligence, your sincerity, your honesty. And I believe you have this community at heart. If you didn't, you wouldn't be in here for 12 years. But at any rate, I want to thank you for your dedicated service. You've made a good community for us to live in and it's deeply appreciated, as well as our police departments. I think they're some of the best, uh, public advocates for Upper Chi Chester is their, their patrolling and their, their dedication and their politeness, as well as their respectability and respectfulness when they deal with people. Our, the township, the sanitation department, another good asset in the community. When they come by to pick up our trash, always willing to help any way they possibly can, answer any questions, what goes in, what, whatnot. So I just want to give those words of appreciation to all of you here tonight. Another observation, and that is that, that at least two people in our community were naturalized yesterday at a ceremony in, in media. I read a report, um, just today, ages 19 to 29, that age bracket, only 31% of them appreciate the United States. They don't look at, they, they look at the United States as a special nation. That means 60, 69% do not see the, the privileges we have here in the United States. But I say that to say this, that the two individuals that I know of, one is a member of our church, was naturalized as a citizen yesterday, as well as the other ones that were naturalized that I met at the ceremony, they were so thankful to be, become citizens of the United States and in their packet was proud to be an American. And they took that out and they were so proud of that and the American flag pin that they were given. And I'm thinking, we really, as a nation, sometimes don't appreciate what we have. And this new regeneration is being taught, and I know this for a fact, taught that this is not such a great nation, there are many other great nations. There may be other great nations, but I still think this is the greatest one on earth. And I think that the fact that we have people who are committed to this nation helped to make it great, but even greater than that is our faith, faith in God. One from a communist country visited 30, maybe 50 years ago, came to find out what made America great. And as he traveled through and saw businesses and buildings and so forth, he came to the, the final conclusion after his stay here in the United States, that what has made America great and greater than any other nation is their churches and the preaching of their faith in God. And that faith in God, a fear of God and a reverence for God, for God's word, has made this country great. As a pastor, I, I, I want to make sure that the word of God is something that is, is preached and proclaimed as much as I possibly can, because I believe that's where our, our strength is going to come from, our, a, a solid foundation is going to be built, is our faith in God. We've come through a rough year, there've been a lot of fears from the, the virus, fears from inflation, fears from job situations, fears from the enemy, and just so much turmoil and uncertainty, maybe that's the word I want to use. But I'd like to leave you with a message from, from the word of God at this Christmas season, a message that came from heaven to earth, a message from the angels to the shepherds, fear not. Fear not. Behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. That's us today. For unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior which is Christ the Lord. I think that's the foundation of our country, it's, needs to be, it's the foundation of our faith as believers in Jesus Christ, and it's the foundation upon which this country was built. And I believe it's the foundation that'll give us confidence and, and hope for the future. And so at this Christmas time, fear not. Lord has sent us good tidings of great joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Winters. Thank you for the kind words and the encouragement. As always, please continue to pray for us, our nation, our community, our township, and us as commissioners. Thank you. There's no other citizens comments tonight, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Have the approval of the minutes on the October 25th, 2021, and the November 11th, 2021, Board of Commissioners meeting, and the November 4th, 2021, Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting.
No moves.
So I get the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number seven, have a member of the board consider a motion authorizing an escrow release to Upper Chi Chester Township in the amount of $52,000. Excuse me, $52,000, $37.33.
No move.
Second, I have a question. What is it?
This is the last one.
Okay.
Okay, item number eight.
We got a bit of a. I just had a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number eight, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing an escrow release to Larry Jackson in the amount of $4,398.67.
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number nine, have a member of the board consider a resolution authorizing an escrow release to Norris Properties LLC in the amount of $13,100.00.
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. A member of the board consider a motion accepting the extension granted to Upper Chi Chester Township for the review of the land development application for 900 Township Line Road.
No move. Second.
What, question?
Yes.
What, I, I read the, the review here. What is, what's he got on record as a plan again for us? I mean, this is, is that?
This is Fazana, this is for, for warehouse.
This is, I mean, what happened to the original, original one with the, that's out to?
It would appear so.
I mean, we've had, like, this is the third time he's been here?
Correct.
And that, that, that's my only concern is, and then it's not, it's what, April next year or May next year, whatever.
Yeah, they're currently going through the, the review process for a 300 some square, a thousand square warehouse facility on that parcel. That parcel was previously zoned, continuing care retirement community and was rezoned as the Township Line Commercial District for that whole building.
Right, we, we just did the overlay for the whole thing from Market Street up to I-95 area, Keystone Road. And he came back to us. My feeling is, it is, I mean, how many more plans we're going to have except that?
This is, this is the first, I like, uh, legal submittal since the, since the continuing care facility. So he has submitted, uh, submitted an application for review through the, through the land development process.
I don't think there's any number of other times that he can be cleared and decide, decide he doesn't want to do it. So my question, so the kid, when they come to the township, do they, the township for a certain property, you're going to have? This is the only, this is basically the first extension for this application. It, it is an extension, but not for the same thing that the team is, it's, it's all. There's a motion in the second, if there's other, I mean, there's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number 11, have a member of the board consider a motion accepting the extension granted to Upper Chi Chester Township for the review of the land development application for 464 Conchester Highway. Who moved?
Second, question. This is Dunkin' Donuts.
This is Dunkin' Donuts.
I'm not trying to be.
Dunkin' Donuts went from, they were going to use a private well on the site to supply water to the site. After review, our review, one of our review comments was, how are, how is that going to fare with fire protection? And they came back that they were now going to Chester Water Authority. So there's been some revisions in the plan, not just about water, also some traffic movements, some vehicle movements through.
Dumpster siding.
The, I'm sorry?
Dumpster siding.
Yeah, so there's been some changes to the plan. When I last spoke to Anthony Cabanagro two weeks ago, I asked him if he would have anything ready for us to take a look at, otherwise he would need to give us an extension. So they're still trying to work out the detail with Chester Water Authority for the extension of the water line to that site.
I understand that, and I'm, I'm okay with this extension, only people, like, one question is, how to get this far without nobody knowing Chester, there was no water going through that building, or into that area?
They, they knew that it was, they knew that it was there, they felt originally, and this is based on the planning commission comments, they could do it with private water. And the planning commission suggested to them that they wanted to look at more detail and more, more reliable water source than a well because of fire suppression, because of those types of things. So it was actually our engineers suggesting, as well as the planning commission, that they explore those types of things and they could do it.
There, there any other question, and, and I, I might be jumping ahead of it on this application only, is, is, is there a resonance around the name? is, is there a residence around the neighborhood that also are going to be able to benefit with the water coming to this building or it's completely the opposite direction? If, if there's no water going to this place, is there residential? I think there's some residential houses in that neighborhood, but I'm not.
Right next to it.
There is. There, there is. And as a matter of fact, that was, there's a couple of concerns that they're still working out. As far as the water is concerned, I don't know. I haven't seen anything from Chester Water Authority or, or from, oh, or, I have to remember which con, which consultant it was. What's that? That, that's the, yeah. Anyway, I don't know whether or not it's going to assist. It could, in the fact that it could actually, if they tie the one direction to the other, it could improve the, the water pressures through there. As far as, as the residents and, and the proximity to the residents, we, there are some issues. There's PennDOT issue. The PennDOT, as you know, ha, has provided a, a sketch that shows this is what that particular property and the adjoining property are going to look like in, once the three twenty-two project's completed. So right now Dunkin' Donuts is putting in some of those improvements. However, it affects the adjoining property. So they're still trying to work out an interim for the design of the entrance to both properties. So there's some, there's some details that need to be resolved for everybody's sake, I think, before they move forward.
Thank you.
So we're right on item number eleven. There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number twelve, have a member of the board consider a resolution granting a waiver from Trinity Christian Church from submission of the main development application.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number thirteen, a member of the board consider a resolution conditional. Final land development plan for Chichester Business Park Parcel B, submitted by Ryan Development LLC in Stadia at eight twenty Columbia Avenue.
No moves.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number fourteen, have a member of the board consider a resolution conditional to including a preliminary final land development for the gear plastified located at twenty-four Creek Circuit.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number fifteen, have a member of the board consider a motion to direct an intensive engineer to complete the final inspection for the two developers, Wawa and Proud Copine Good LLC, for the project at Chichester Avenue Meeting House Road.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number sixteen on the agenda. Have a member of the board consider a motion directing a township engineer to complete the final inspection for WP Boothland Auto Zone for the project at Chichester Avenue in Melrose.
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments? Do one quick one. When they plan on opening?
Auto Zone is open. Wawa, they have a conditional U and O.
Okay.
Um, the Wawa is expected to open on Friday the seventeenth.
I knew that one. The road line, it looks like it was open. That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Right. So motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Item number seventeen will be read by Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just want to announce the holiday parade and Christmas village. So it's going to be, weather permitting. So my, we had a meeting this evening, and as long as the weather, right now it's showing rain, but it's supposed to start later in the evening. So the committee is going to make a call to determine if, in fact, move forward, which hope to. So. It was a rain day, but we're not speaking about the rain. But I'm going to. Um. So they're going to, so they want everyone at the middle school at four o'clock on Saturday, any, all the participants, anyone that's in the parade to be there at four o'clock. And it starts at five thirty. We are looking to, the vendors are going to start setting up at Willowbrook Shopping Center around noon. And again, depending on whether we may change the time to open up the village earlier so that people can come and shop earlier and then end earlier. Right now it's supposed to end at eight thirty. We're thinking about changing the time to end at seven. So again, we'll, we'll update Brian and George, Andrew, George will for update everyone if there is a change in schedule or date.
So George's email is not correct, and it's not four thirty, it's four o'clock now.
So. They want the.
The flights.
Right.
If you want to sit down there for a minute.
Right.
I'm gonna have my kids in the house. I think they're gonna make it a whole hour and a half, so we're gonna try.
Um, also, a couple of other things. The library will be hosting its annual holiday gathering on. Oh. Huh?
Three hour.
Oh, okay. I'm just going on, okay. I'll, I'll talk about the library later. But anyway, so the parade, keep posted about the parade. Thank you. All right. I was just, thank you. Okay. Um, okay, go ahead.
Number seven.
Already did.
She already did. That's what she just did.
Oh, so is there a motion?
No, no, no. It's just an announcement. No.
Thank you. We'll get there. All right. I move to authorize an escrow release to Ruth Merritt in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That is, you're Beeson Avenue.
Oh, right. Thank you. Thank you. I didn't recognize the name. They called him the other day. Thanks for getting that on there.
So motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Mr. Nary, Commissioner Nary's not here tonight. It was like.
Sure.
Bounce of all.
Sure. All right. Consider a motion approving the agreement between Upper Tychus Township and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Twenty-seven.
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments? No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the resignation of Sergeant Kenneth Massey, retiring effective January seventh, twenty twenty-two.
No move.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion elevating patrolman first class Brian Gilmore to the position of sergeant in Upper Chichester Township Police Department effective January ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. They only have the second because she's making a motion.
Okay. Question?
Right.
All right. Question. Was that part of the testing they have with the civil service, the sergeant test? Or we just took it off the list?
No, they performed the sergeant's test with the civil service.
Okay.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion elevating Officer Philip Troutman to full-time status effective January ninth, twenty twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion elevating Officer Pascal Stors. What do you?
Storachi.
Oh, Storachi. Consider a motion elevating Officer Pascal Storachi to full-time status effective January ninth, twenty twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
So motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion amending the twenty twenty-one holiday schedule to account for the observation of the twenty twenty-two New Year's Day holiday on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
So motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the twenty twenty-two holiday schedule. So moved.
Second.
Question.
Question.
Did, did we iron out the holidays, Veterans Day?
So right now, which proposed is the same which proposed.
Adding, I, I sent an email, add, uh, adding Veterans Day to the list of holidays. I did see, I believe, one response.
Yeah, the Commissioner was suggesting that be Election Day and add Veterans Day.
I would be good with that. I mean, what's, what's it now, fourteen? I mean, I know we got the new one in June.
Right.
And then.
Nobody's open on Veterans Day. Nobody wants to work.
No, I understand.
What is it? The primary or is it, was he talking about the general?
General.
Yeah, nobody's working. Right.
But we didn't, I understand the history that was done because it's so being utilized as an election.
My recommendation was to add Veterans Day, to not take anything away, but to add Veterans Day as a holiday. What, what were the other comments?
I agree with you.
I, I was okay with Veterans Day, but removing the election day, general election. Because you added the other one, so it's up to you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
What is it? What, you're going with?
Oh, I'm sorry. A yes vote would be in favor of adding Veterans Day without removing general election, and a no vote would be to remove.
Just be down.
Yes.
It's not approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay. So wait a minute. We had a motion in, already on the floor, right? We had a motion in the second to approve this schedule, the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-two. So we didn't act on that. So we can amend that motion.
Which, which is what you did, by this, I said, and I vote would include Veterans Day and the general election.
Okay. Got it. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Now you're back to your. So, yes, then, because I missed that. Yes. Answers to make me go down. All right. So we end of the day. Thank you. Um.
They are.
Okay. Uh, motion approving and authorizing the advertising of the twenty twenty-two Township meeting schedule.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion adopting the twenty twenty-two Upper Chichester Township budget.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the MasterCard agreement for the TD commercial plus card with TD Bank NA. So moved.
Second.
Question.
How capital is this, is this, George? I mean.
Oh, the odd compromise.
It's very.
I've got, I read it, and it's like.
So basically, don't look at it as a credit card. Look at it as like a zero balance bank account. So from a procedural perspective, we're still going to go through the process here of purchase rec, which gets approved by a department head and that, approved, and then turned into a purchase order. And then the purchase order, in our computer system, as opposed to saying, pay this one with a check, we tag it as paying with a card, right? So when you guys, you guys will actually see the detail of every one of those payments every month. What happened is, back end, we will lot, like, we're going to start with Comcast, right? So, so this account will be set up that it can only pay these Comcast accounts, and it will be the township accounts, and it'll pay them every month. So there's like broad control protect, protections to make sure that it can't be used for anything outside of what, like very, very specific things. And then on the flip side, there is a lot of, it's very transparent with the reported. So we don't physically get a credit card. We get a credit account. And, and we go into their system and work with them to set it up so that it's locked, that it only pays Comcast and only pays these car, these accounts. So I say Comcast because that's our, that's our trial one. That's the first one we're going to put in. Then it'll be the AT&T bill. So the AT&T bill will have a theoretical different credit card number under this commercial account. But that one will only be able to pay the AT&T bill with the account number for the township. And then we'll go to PICO and so forth and so on until we get them all, everything that we can pay, paid like that.
Yeah, that was my concern, if there was a physical card and.
Right.
Signatures and all that.
No physical cards. And then the other thing, there, there were some questions about that whole first page, which is the, how, how much additional money? So basically, the quicker we pay TD Bank back for the purchases made, the more money we can, the more reimbursement we get, right? So we're going to set up with column one, which, which basically is a two-day payment period. So we're going to pay Comcast through the card, and they're going to auto debit our payable account right away. And then that maximizes the benefit of the card to get us the most rebate. Since interest rates are really low, this will be a way for us to hedge the fact that our, we haven't been making a lot of money on our reserves. We'll make money off of our purchases as opposed to our reserves.
Motion in the, motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lights On Economy NSPC for the annual audit of the Township financial statements not to exceed seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor? Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lights On Economy NSPC for the annual audit of the Township Real Estate Collector Financial Statements not to exceed three thousand, one hundred dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lights On Economy NS for the annual audit of the non-uniform defined contribution pension fund financial statements not to exceed twenty-nine hundred dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lights On Economy NS for the annual audit of the non-uniform defined benefit pension fund financial statements not to exceed four thousand, four hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lights On Economy NS for the annual audit of the police pension fund financial statements not to exceed four thousand, four hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the waiver of the twenty twenty-one Township Real Estate Property, excuse me, Township Real Estate Tax Penalty for forty-eight Dresner Circle. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the Township Treasurer to pay all necessary bills through the end of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the Township Treasurer to make all necessary fund transfers through the end of twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
So motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills. So moved.
Second.
So motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Good question.
Yes.
George, when we got like nine things from one, like Lights On, can't we like bunch them into one?
The reason this is spread out is because of the dollar amounts all are, are like all different. And we pay some of these out of the actual, like pension fund. If, if they were all coming out of the same fund, we could probably do a full, full dollar amount.
Uh, that's it. We'll move on to our professionals report, professionals report. We'll start off with the township engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report. I went through it quite extensively at the last meeting. I did want to mention that the Auto Zone, we are. I did want to mention that the Autozone, we are planning on, on having the final inspection tomorrow. The Wawa is expected to have their final inspection on Monday. They're currently working on some PennDOT issues. The PennDOT identified during their final inspection that it's going to affect ours. So we're going to hold off until Monday to get that, that particular item done. The Willbrook Clubhouse, I understand that the fence has been put up around the BMP.
Yes, I took, I took a drive through just the, the, what had been done, and I noticed that they put a fence on the upper hill where the parking lot's at. And they wrapped it around the catch basin to the part where if you did park in the parking lot, still utilize the back door. But being at the back door, the fence wraps, there's a basin, so nobody can, you know, fall through.
Oh, I, yeah.
If you walk up the hill, there is no fence there, but down hill, there is. So it looks good, but thank you.
And otherwise, I can just report general progress, as I noted, and I'm not gonna go through the scoping form. We did get comments back regarding that, and Al and I will follow up on that. And I can tell you, just, I hope that everyone has a nice Christmas, Merry Christmas to all, Happy New Year, many blessings in the coming year, and I'll end with that.
Thank you. For our engineer. Now, when we move on to our township solicitor, Mr. Michael Pierce.
President, you have copied my written report, we've taken care of most of the act, all the act tonight, just needed on my report. Department of the FOP. Action contract, which is a five-year contract. Arguing for both sides, it was a. There are law on both sides. Ability to wish everyone.
We'll move on to Mr. George Needle, our township manager.
Good evening, everybody. The township administrative files are, or reports are on file in the office, office. Next Tuesday, we'll have a construction committee meeting. 4800 Chichester Avenue has requested to come in to get further clarification on the review comments from all the reviewers. They will not be attending the Planning Commission meeting in December. Then Thursday, we do have a Planning Commission meeting. Right now, 900 Township Line Road is on the agenda, and we are waiting to hear from 464 Conchester, which would be the Dunkin' Donuts if they will be appearing. Prior to that meeting, I will be doing a workshop with the Planning Commission as we talk about the Saldo Rewrite Project, getting some feedback on some potential administrative changes from them. That's something we've been planning for a couple of months. Next week, Wednesday, I have a meeting with FEMA to discuss the potential project of the home acquisition on Colonial. It's Drive. This was a, is an exploratory conversation about a potential project to, to acquire a property that has substantial repetitive flooding issues. We'll also be meeting with Congresswoman Scanlon to discuss how COVID affected the township, and would like to converse with her about ARPA funds and the restrictions and the convoluted nature that the federal government has made the, for utilizing those funds. We will also be meeting with PennDOT the next week after that to discuss the CSX Bridge Project. This is part of the 322 widening project. It's the, the second phase that will, will actually be under construction. I met with the Delaware County Tax Collection Committee Association today. I was elected to serve as the vice chair for that, representing Upper Chichester Township earlier this year. And we're going to be doing some things next year in, in efforts to better communicate some of the notices that go out in response to earned income tax. I know everybody here has gotten calls from residents getting, getting these letters saying they are delinquent on their earned income tax. So, so we're trying to figure out how to get ahead of that. And I'm also going into my second year serving, representing the township as the president of the Consortium of Governments of Delaware County. I have a meeting with a couple of the county council women this month to discuss how we can have better relations working with them and how they can better fund some of the activities that we have going on in our municipalities. So I will report that back to everybody. Other than that, everybody have a happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
George, one quick question. Did Carrie Scanlon come in? Have more than one, three board numbers here, is that gonna be an issue with this? Mission with the. Right. Just didn't want, sit all over the place, but I know she's gonna be here, it'd be a good idea to.
She's only scheduled here to be an hour also.
Thought it was an hour.
Official 12:30 or 1:00.
Okay. No problem.
There's no other questions for our township manager, we'll move on to our commissioner's report, and start off with the vice chairman, Commissioner Joe Baco.
Thank you. Highway and sanitation, everything's moving along normally. It's kind of transition time for the highway department, put the summer equipment away and get out the winter equipment. They finished on their end on the generator project. I think the electrical company's in there doing the final tie-ins and all, and I think next week sometime, PICO will shut down and make the conversion for us.
The caveat to that meeting, we will be on the generator power during that meeting, because Wednesday is the switchover. So we'll be running on the old generator for that entire day. For the entire day, but we should be fine.
We'll find out. And soon and whatever, everything's on file, I, they emailed me the reports, and I forward them to Michael and George. If you don't want to use one of them, I'll forward. Want a copy? And so I have. Echo everybody else, happy holidays, stay safe, and enjoy your time with family.
Thank you. Um, commissioner, any questions for Commissioner Matt?
Well, one of the issues is, the old, the, one of the companies was sold to a bigger, broader company, it's not from the area, nothing. Some of the concerns are response time, you know what I mean? I, I'm discussing it with him. I'm glad somebody else is in there, you're not to.
Any questions for Commissioner Whitaker?
The library is having their annual holiday.
Interrupt you, George, what time's that construction meeting? Good. Robert Whitaker.
Any questions for Commissioner Whitaker?
Yeah, this, you want to announce this?
Yeah. So we received a grant. Chichester Township Recreation Department.
The third board's out.
Something. Does that money have to, since it's dedicated to that, go into a separate fund and? Open space or anything, or you're?
Questions for Commissioner Whitaker, we'll move on to.
Thank you. Short and sweet. A long, pretty long night for everybody, but the reports are on file. Everything is, we did, George, myself, and Nancy did meet with PennDOT. I think all of our little tiny meetings are done with PennDOT, except the Delaware County Planning Department for the Boothland Town Center Task Force. It does look like the task force is almost, most of them are agreeable for January 10th, is when the task force will be getting together for the last plan that Nancy has for us. Any suggestions they have, or any comments they have to be added to it and adjusted? As I stated last week, I would like to have a meeting in February 7th or the 21st, for an open house meeting here with the commissioners to present the plan to the public and the commissioners. Well, I'll try to get, try to give me some dates that you, you're able to do, the 7th or the 10th, or the 7th or the 21st of February, as our contract with Nancy is at the end of February, but the board could adopt this plan in March. So I just want to have one special meeting for that, so. Right now, I don't have any consensus with the task force, but I do for January 10th. More or less, with the board of commissioners are able to get onto their calendar, and then we would. With Nancy, it'd be no problem. Myself, we just try to get the task force there so they could be there, because I know they're excited from day one, they, they grabbed hold of this plan by both, both ears and ran with it, and they're excited about it, and they want to get it out to the people. And then we could start our process anywhere down the road with the overlays, or whatever we need to do. On the other note, the emergency management, we do have a tabletop exhibition on the 13th, next Monday, from 5:30 to 9:30. I don't know if the deadline's up for us to, to be able to be invited, but it's more or less for the food for the night, because you're gonna be here at dinnertime, so. Yeah, it's gonna be a barbecue, so if you want a barbecue, come on up, but you must participate. If you're gonna have my barbecue, participate in the tabletop. And on that note, for the emergency management and the fire department, I gave a kudos out last week, I hope everybody could see that meeting. I'll do it again with the, the search we had for a gentleman. It was an all-nighter for everybody to, to fire him in the police department. Just go back to last, last month's meeting, I still give a kudos out to the volunteers, men and women. Philadelphia Police Department, with theirs, our police department asked, and I don't want to forget everybody, the fire department, outside fire departments that came in while they were on other calls. It was very successful, thank God. As we all went to bed, they were still out there. I was communicating, communicating with this board up to midnight, but they were still out there doing their job. And the gentleman was found by another neighbor in police department, because that's where he was found, but everything worked out. And as I said, it was very nice that everybody came together, and that's their job, and that's what they do 24/7, no matter what, who it is, where it is, so. And on that note, please be safe this season. It's Christmas time. Your trees, please remember to water those trees, space heaters, everything. CO detectors, our heaters are on now, our, our, our men and women are responding daily on everything. It may be a nuisance to you for that alarm going off, but don't ignore it. Call the fire department, because you never, matter of fact, there was an incident already with people dying with their gas and everything like that, not in this town or not in this county. But just be safe, it's the holiday, we got January, we have February, March, just, if the alarms go off, call. That's what, that's what we are here for, so, but echo on everybody else, be safe, happy holidays, my professionals, my colleagues, the residents, pastor, kind words to everybody, we don't hear it that much. Once a year, if we get kind words, that's great, we will take them. But Merry Christmas, and like Joe said, Joe Biaco, be with your family and your friends, and anybody else that needs them, Christmas spirit, so, thank you very much. Done.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Rakowski?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I mean.
And I'm thinking about too, with her, with Nancy trying to get a, a final plan in by the March meeting, that, that, if we give, she'd be, February 7th should give her enough time to incorporate any public comment from that to it. Because she said she has to submit that to the state.
Right, for the public comments.
Yeah.
And, and also, I mean, the plan she has now that she's putting together, and then we meet the 10th, I'm hoping she has it enough time for the planning commission for January's meeting, so they can review it. So everything aligned in the place, and then we'll take it for March. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with my reports. I believe we covered everything planning tonight with our motions, voting on various items. Just to update the individuals on zoning, on the zoning board, they had a meeting this past week, December 7th. There was two variance requests for mixed use, one was approved, one was not approved, just to update the board on those two items, and other than that, I really don't have anything else, except Merry Christmas. Um, I've been. Everyone throughout the years, so hopefully we can come back together in January and whichever. Likes to go, that we can still. And I'm looking forward to it. Um, also, just in passing, I was talking to Brian today, he informed me that the base, around $80,000 in the rentals between the building and gymnasium. I say thank you to that, and that's not including the softball field, so. It's probably, it's, it's a little bit higher than that. Merry Christmas, Pastor Lewis, thank you for the very kind words. Our men in blue, and our first responders, thank you for everything. So very Merry Christmas. Our staff for, for working hard for us. George?
Mike, just a note for January, just so just everybody remembers, so January 3rd, we have the reorganization meeting at 7 o'clock. January 6th would be the caucus meeting, and January 13th would be the big meeting. So we'll have three meetings over the course of two weeks, so it is gonna be kind of busy. I would like to, Mike, could we, after the, during the reorganization meeting, after the appointments, can we entertain other township business? Okay, so I will, I will take all of the items that are your standard items for January, and I'll have them on that night, so we can just kind of knock, get them out of the way. So if you wanted to amend the schedule.
So we're talking about skipping the 6th, then?
Nah, I wouldn't skip it, it'd just be faster.
Why can't we do reorg in the caucus together?
Why can't we do reorgan the caucus together? Well, that's what I mean. We would skip the 6th.
What were you saying? The 1st meeting?
Well, no, no, no. Yeah, so on the, so in previous years, sometimes we have entertained like your standard, this is standard business, that's like the, the resolutions that have to happen every January during that reorganization meeting, and then, and then you've held either one or both meetings, and they've just been shorter. But you ha, you can absolutely do the caucus meeting that night as well, immediately following the reorganization. It's up to you.
Hey, we?
Yeah, so I'd like to advertise the trash fee and the ordinance for passage that night, as well as, and then pass the community development block grant, as well as the other resolutions, the, the bank accounts, the, the things we have to do.
For January 3rd or for the commission?
January 3rd.
Okay.
They're moved.
All favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Yes. That's change of mind.